Would you please stand for invocation and remain standing for the place of the flag.
Yes.
Dear Lord, we gather here today to do the business of the county, guide our hearts and our minds and the spirits of fairness, right thoughts and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon the activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source that guided us today. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sure in 6:30 with the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM Tuesday, August 19, 2014, come to order. I would like for the board to consider amending the agenda as published. And item, the first item would be let's add under the technological services, which would be five, six, or eight, under eight, add a C, and it would be a resolution to approve the purchase of a ballot on-demand system that we're going to need before the next meeting, I understand. Another item is pen and ink on item 10, planning and zoning. Item A is make a note that that will be a public hearing. It doesn't list that in there, but it is required for it to be a public hearing, so when I get to that, I will announce it after the presentation that we will open the floor up for citizens that would like to be heard reference this issue here. Having said that, would somebody consider moving to approve the budget as amended?
Chairman, I'd also, while we're amending-
Have a motion to have a second from five. Any further discussion?
Chairman, I was going to ask that we amend the agenda also to add an executive session as item number 18 for personnel matters?
Okay, we have amended for executive session. Is it, what purpose?
Personnel.
Personnel, it wouldn't be about the chairman now, would it?
No, no sir.
Okay, as long as it ain't about the chair, I'm just saying.
If it was, then we have to give you notice, I guess.
Sir?
If it was, we have to give you notice, I'm a bad joke.
Okay. Okay. Is the Honorable District Five second at motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, correction, any further discussion on the add-on of the executive session? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Next, public comments, citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must sign your name, address, and specify topics you wish to speak about, and you will or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address your board for five minutes. I only have one that signed up, so I would recognize Ms. Joyce Hinton, and if you would, for the record, approach your podium, I'll give you a name and address for the records, and you will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe this will take more than five minutes. I have been asked, let me say my name first, I'm Joyce Hinton, 904 Flat shows Church Road. I am chairman of the Henry County Republican Party. I have been asked to make a statement on behalf of the Henry County Republican Party directed at our Republican commissioners. First, we have heard that a statement was made by speaker at a town hall held by one of our Republican commissioners. The statement was as follows, "The Republicans are the party of no, no, no." That statement is incorrect. We are the party of principal conservative values. We support our candidates based on a pledge to those values. Among those values are an adherence to fiscal responsibility. Fiscal responsibility includes the following, living within a budget, controlled spending, and lower taxes. In other words, if you can't afford it, you don't buy it, and you certainly don't put yourself in the position of borrowing money you cannot repay. We expect the same from our Republican candidates. Second, the Republican commissioners in the past have forgotten these principal values and have burdened the county taxpayers with millions of dollars of debt. The citizen taxpayer is now paying the piper for the reckless spending and borrowing. Taking more out of their budgets and limiting their spendable income is the fate of the taxpayer now. The taxpayers of Henry County deserve better. Third, the Republicans showed their disapproval at the ballot box when they voted to remove those Republicans who set this calamity in motion. They had forgotten their pledges, promises, and values. Now we seem to be faced with more broken promises from others. We want to remind these Republican commissioners that we worked hard on their campaigns based on these promises. Their campaigns were run on conservative values, their push cards promised to control spending and lower taxes. However, their actions do not show this when they vote for more spending, borrowing, and tax increases. Furthermore, they need to be reminded that they are accountable to their voters, not other commissioners, or so-called gentleman's agreement. Their agreement is with the voter who put them in their position. We want them to know that we are watching, and once again, the ballot box will reflect the disapproval of their actions. Finally, we want to remind our Republican commissioners that the Republican Party's mascot is the elephant, and elephants have long memories. Thank you for your time.
Item number six, administrative resolution question action, ask to levy the 11 authority for the 2014 calendar year. Mr. Jim Walker, county manager, and David Curry.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on July 23, 2014, this board of commissioners voted four to two to adopt a countywide millage rate of 14.298. Because the county board of education had not voted to either recommend or adopt their millage rate by the time the board of commissioners voted to adopt the countywide millage rate, we were unable to present the BOC, the board of commissioners, a comprehensive resolution to levy taxes. Tonight, we are presenting the comprehensive resolution to levy taxes to the board of commissioners for its acceptance.
Before we move much further, I'd just like to make one quick comment for information. I received some phone calls about what this meeting was about. Some individuals thought this was another hearing about a millage rate, as the county manager spoke. The millage rate was set on July 23 for not only the countywide millage rate, but the board of education, as well as City McDonough. All three of those meetings were held on July 23. I picked this up, actually printed it down in my office, and whoever printed the executive summary, maybe it's the clerk that does this, I think worded it very well. In the third paragraph, "We are here tonight for the resolution of levy," which is actually a formal means by which the county officially imposes all millage rates in Henry County. So I didn't want there to be any misinterpretation of why we're here tonight. It is for the resolution of levy.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I received a phone call from some concerned citizens and actually professionals that are associated with the school board, and they called me and they said, "Brian, you know, we wanted to reach out to you because we know that you're the former chairman of the school board, and you understand how important it is that the school system," just as I've talked to the county manager, "we're at the end of our annual funding, so money starts getting really tight. Just to make sure you clarify what this vote is, so the teachers and the students aren't held hostage because of some misunderstandings of what this vote is for tonight." So I just want to make sure everybody understood. I think you've said it very well as the tax commissioner, but I just want to make sure as a commissioner, I share my point of view is that, because I've also received some comments from people who are concerned, all this vote is, is you're taking the three bodies, the school board, the county commission, and then the water authority, who acted as bodies that chose their millage. Now, we had a contested millage where we had four, four lowering the millage to the point that we did, and then we had two that voted because they didn't approve the millage rate that was adopted. I say this just to clarify so that everybody knows, this is just a vote to levy the taxes, to basically tell David, our tax commissioner, "Go do your work and levy the taxes that we're constitutionally allowed to do," and it has nothing to do with the millage that we have. So I just wanted to make sure so that my school board officials who contacted me will know that we are working together and not trying to hold up their funding.
Any other comments? Well, I don't have to read a whole resolution. Would y'all be kind enough to, can you display that where the audience can see it and just leave it up there on the first page, and then put the second page, and then? Turn your TV around.
Turn the TV around. We can tell. Keep going right.
Well, that's all we left, isn't it? Where's ITG?
Could you, could you, somebody ever who's doing this, okay. Now, I would take that down and put the second sheet on. I would take that down. We have a resolution in the book, a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners levying and assessing the ever-long taxes for fiscal year 2014. If a commissioner wants to move on a direction, a motion would be in order.
Move to approve.
We have a motion from District Two to approve.
Second.
Second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving down to CB, correction, I won't say Charlie Delta, but that's CDBG program. CDB turns 40, an update on Henry County's CDB program. Brittany, good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. See if I can get this PowerPoint to work. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, county administration, and residents of Henry County. I'm speaking to you tonight for informational purposes only, and I have a brief PowerPoint presentation, just to give you a brief update about the Henry County CDBG program, because as you stated on the agenda, it is our 40th anniversary of the federal program. The Community Development Block Grant was signed into law by President Gerald Ford on August 22, 1974, as Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, and it is regulated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grant provides an annual allocation to population-eligible cities and counties for the purpose of developing communities through decent housing, suitable living environments, and the expansion of economic opportunities, primarily for the benefit of low-to-moderate-income persons. Well, I went too far that time. But since its inception in 1974, the CDBG program has allocated more than $144 billion to communities nationwide in community development activities. In fiscal year 14 alone, $3.1 billion was allocated by the federal government to 1,220 CDBG grantees nationwide. This includes Henry County, which became an entitlement grantee in 2012, as you all know, and that happened when the population reached the minimum threshold of 200,000 residents. The fiscal year 14 allocation for Henry County was $1,2,637. To meet this end, we allocate funds to activities meeting national objectives established by the national program, including benefiting persons of low and moderate incomes, prevention and elimination of slum and blight, meeting an urgent development need where a threat is posed to the health or welfare of a community. Funded activities must meet one of these national objectives, and they must be eligible activities. In the first two program years, 2012 and 2013, the Henry County CDBG program funded six public service activities which benefited over 4,000 county residents directly, using $273,204. I fell behind on this again and forgot about it. Along with the public service activities, three public facility and infrastructure projects were completed, using $174,995, and another two are in progress. The program also operates an owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program with the assistance of Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity, and 15 households have received assistance through this program thus far. For fiscal year 14, seven public services will be funded, estimated to benefit over 2,000 residents directly, and four new public facility improvements will be undertaken. One of the completed projects this year included ADA improvements in the Locust Grove City Hall. This was a historic building that has two floors, but had no ADA compliance, so the second floor could not be used, which included a community room. Henry County CDBG assisted in installing an elevator so that the second floor could be accessed and that community room could be used by residents of Locust Grove. In addition, a project was completed adding pedestrian and streetlight improvements on South Berry Street in the city of Stockbridge. Residents in the neighborhoods surrounding that area would walk up and down the street to access businesses, schools, and things of that nature on North Henry Boulevard, and they either had to use the street or shrubby, grassy areas. And now there's sidewalk and infrastructure improvements using CDBG dollars in the county. In addition, in this year, CDBG program has updated and revised policies to better reflect practices and to provide an understanding and education to subrecipients to ensure that everyone is complying with federal regulations. We're preparing to update the website to make it the most informative and transparent CDBG website available in the state. We will be adopting activities and introducing new programs to meet residents' needs as discovered, and we'll be further partnering with the four cities to complete more projects. We've also recently partnered with the County Neighborhood Stabilization Program and the Grants Accountant to ensure that both programs are most effective for the beneficiaries, the residents of Henry County, as well as all are in compliance with federal regulations. HUD programs like CDBG are operated on behalf of the residents of Henry County. To that end, the Henry County CDBG program actively seeks and welcomes citizen input. A community needs assessment survey is available on the CDBG website at www.co.henry.g a.us/cdbg. More information on the Community Development Block Grant program and its applicable regulations are available at hud.gov, and more information regarding the Henry County CDBG program, including its current policies and practices, and recipients of fiscal '14 funds, is available on the Henry County website. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you so much. Resolution question approval of a CDBG subrecipient agreement with the Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity to be used for housing assistance. Shannon, good evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening, commissioners. What we have before you all this evening, as mentioned, is a requisition where we're requesting the approval of a new CDBG subrecipient agreement between Henry County and Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity. As you all are aware, Habitat for Humanity has been assisting and partnering with the county since 2012 with our housing rehab program for homeowners. In the last two years working with Habitat, we have noticed some areas of improvements in that program, and we're hoping that these amendments to the contract will strengthen that partnership, allowing us and Habitat to better benefit and serve the community and those in greatest need. The two major amendments would include an automatic renewal of the contract for an additional 12-month period. Currently, the, or the recently expired contract was only for 12 months. We have included a provision in that contract where it will automatically renew for an additional 12 months, as long as Habitat is complying with all the federal regulations and meeting all of the guidelines. The other change is to permit Habitat or give them the authority to procure services, to go out and seek out contractors for the services in which they themselves cannot provide. As you all are aware, Habitat is largely staffed or assisted through volunteers. Those volunteers do not necessarily always have the skill sets and the labor and tools to perform all of the improvements that our homeowners need. Being able to contract contractors to do some of these improvements will allow us to better serve the communities and those in needs, those homeowners who are seeking those improvements. One of the things that we found is some of the individuals who have been seeking assistance have not been able to receive those assistance, not because they didn't qualify, but because we didn't have the tools in place to assist them, and we're hoping to rectify that through these means. Now, staff, in reviewing this and in discussion with Habitat, we did not find that these changes require citizens' participation, as we are not changing the scope to change the beneficiaries or adding any activity that would change the overall product. Our beneficiaries are still those individuals who are of low mod income, based on the household income, and the overall service is still to improve the housing of those individuals. We are only seeking to be able to contract with private contractors or consultants to better be able to assist those individuals. And that is the gist of this amendment for the contract. Again, Habitat, we have been working with them since 2012 with the first annual action plan for CDBG. The partnership has been working well. We're just seeing where there are some needs of improvement, where we can better serve the community.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Shannon, I noticed that y'all, in the notes, that y'all are starting to use Google Drive to kind of share and get the financial. That's awesome. Are y'all doing that with more providers, or is Habitat kind of cutting edge on that, or is that our suggestion?
Habitat is cutting edge on that. We will continue as we're monitoring organizations, seeing what they have access to, and how we can fill those bridges and those gaps through technology and other services.
Yeah, because we, my business-wise, we have locations in three separate states, and I have found Google Drive is the stuff, when if you want to make distance, nothing to share.
Yes, sir.
Emails, notes, financial statements, anything, it's great. So thanks.
Yes, it has been a great benefit.
Anybody else have any question or comment? No, we have a resolution in the book to approve the Community Development Block Grant Program Housing Assistant Subrecipient Agreement with Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity. If somebody would move in that direction.
So move.
Second motion, District Five.
Second.
Second, District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Technological Services, resolution question approval of an annual maintenance agreement for backup battery power supply. Skip Floyd, good evening, but you ain't Skip.
No, sir, I'm Andy Dobbs. I'm the operations manager of Technology Services. I'm substitute for Skip this evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
What you have before you is a request to renew the maintenance agreement on our large Libret backup battery system down in the server room just downstairs here. It requires annual maintenance, and they come in and service it probably three or four times a year, and that agreement needs to be renewed. And it's for $11,305 per year, so this is a one-year renewal agreement for your consideration.
Anybody have any questions or comment? We have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to award the managed print service contract with Miller Print. Is that the same one we own?
No, that's the second one, sir.
That's the second one. Okay, let's do. Okay, we have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners to renew annual maintenance agreement for the server system battery backup.
Move.
Second motion, District Four.
Second.
Second, District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
The second one you have before you is a, to award the managed print services contract. If you look at the executive summary, Henry County is a participating member in the U.S. Communities Governance Purchasing Alliance. Purchasing uses that for a number of things. Purchasing led the way on this one as well. The current managed print services contract is expiring on November 1, and this is to award that contract. We had two companies that submitted proposals through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance, and one of those was the incumbent, and the other one, of course, was not, and the incumbent came back with the lower price. So Milner, who is an Atlanta-based company, proposed $11,437.17 per month, which is a reduction of the current contract on a monthly basis. Just a clarification, this contract and the one that's currently in place, and this new one, does not include maintenance or ink for inkjet printers. This is strictly a laser printer managed print services contract, includes all the parts, labor, and maintenance, and toner for about 500 laser printers that the county uses, virtually in every department in the county. This new contract also is going to try, as we say, to shape the printer fleet over time, and we're going to limit the brands and models of new printers that we might acquire over the life of the contract, and try to reduce the different kinds of printers, and therefore different kinds of toner. Entertain any questions that you might want to-
Anybody have any questions or comments? We have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners, to award the managed print services contract to Milner Print Services. If somebody would move.
Move to approve.
Second motion, District Two. Second, District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for the add-on, we're going to hear a resolution to approve the purchase of a ballot demand system. The election superintendent, Ms. Shannon Shelnut, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The resolution before you tonight concerns a Ballator system. It's a ballot-on-demand printing system. Currently, Henry County is the 10th-largest county as far as registered voters. We will be the 18th county that has purchased this Ballator if we approve it tonight. We currently buy paper ballots, which are the absentee ballots that we mail out, or provisional ballots, from this company, but we have a printer in Texas. You have to buy a certain amount of each precinct, each ballot style, and it's a minimum of 25 or 50 per ballot style, which costs a lot of money. I think we figured the last election, by the time what we had to shred, as to what we had to guess of what we needed to order, each ballot costs $4.61. This will be 45 cents apiece, set 45 cents apiece. We will print them as they are needed. This is a sole provider. They're the only ballot printing company in Georgia that is approved through the state of Georgia and has the voter registration system hooked into it, which also makes us a lot more accountable, because you will pull the ballot for that person, and their name will be on the ballot stub. So that tells you you're sending the right ballot to the right person, which accountability is an awful big thing with elections. I think it is well-needed for what we spend in the presidential year. We spend $22,000 to $28,000 a year on printing for ballots. So it will pay for itself in that one year alone. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Anybody have any questions or comment? No, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the purchase of the ballot-on-demand system. I guess that's Ballator.
Ballator.
For the election and registration department.
So move.
Second motion, District Four. Second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. Same sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Building Department, resolution question approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Hampton for commercial building inspections. Derek, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. The request before you this evening is to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Hampton and Henry County to provide commercial building inspection services. City of Hampton wishes to utilize an employee of Henry County to provide commercial building inspections on an as-needed or per-inspection basis. City of Hampton has agreed to pay for such services, including overtime expenses if needed in emergency situations. Staff recommends approval of the- The building department is willing and able to perform these services.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Yes, sir.
I just want to thank, Derek, just so the citizens know, we, it was interesting. We had actually the mayor for Hampton, as well as Marty, who's one of the city council members, Marty Meeks, they were in town for, or in the building for another item that's actually on the agenda tonight. And then you were nice enough, Derek, we just showed up at your doorstep and said, hey, we've got this issue, really like for you to help out our, our friends and family members in Hampton, and I just appreciate you guys stepping up to help them out and kind of creating that collaborative environment that I think is better for the whole county. And I know we have some city council members here, and I just want to make sure I gave them a shout-out for finding a solution by, by sharing resources on this.
Anybody else? Have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Hampton and Henry County for commercial building inspection services. Have a motion from District Two.
Second.
Second from District Five. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you so much. Planning and zoning, this is the public hearing portion. Resolution request authorized to submit a short-term work program and capital improvements elements. Jeremy Gilbert, good, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. The request that is before you tonight is a public hearing. It is a requirement to submit the short-term work program capital improvement element to the Atlanta Regional Commission to then forward on to DCA in order for us to maintain our local qualified government status. Planning and zoning staff, as well as other departments in the county, have come together and went through the list of projects that are proposed to be completed in a five-year program. The short-term work program is from fiscal year 2014 through 2018, and in that, in your packet that you have, has a detailed list of the projects, the responsible parties, as well as projected cost and timeframes. There are four minor changes that I'd like to go over that were brought to our attention just moments before this meeting tonight. Those four changes, if you're looking at the short-term work program, on page one, I mean, on page two, we had listed under contributors, Terry McMichael was listed as the Public Works Division Director that needed to be changed to Henry County DOT Director. Also, on number two, page number nine, number 90, was listed for Henry Parkway Path. The amount that was shown in your packet was 300,000. That amount needed to be changed to 333,000. And then on page nine, number 92, for Panola Mountain Greenway Trail, the amount changed from 1,128,000 to 1,800,000. And on page number 12, item number 129 was left blank, and that project name should have been Rogers Road Profile Improvements. And I have printed a new updated version to be able to give to the clerk tonight illustrating those changes that were made. And we do have representatives from the various departments here tonight that can answer any specific questions you may have about any projects that are listed on here. I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have the resolution for the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the Short-Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Elements for the Annual Update Transmittal.
Chairman, I think it's the public hearing part. Do we need to open it up for the...
That's the resolution, I was getting to the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you for the heads-up. Now, I will open the floor up for 15 minutes for a public hearing. If you would, come up to the podium, I'm going to give you 15 minutes and state your name and address for the records. I'll start the clock when the first one comes up. I was. Okay. No one coming up? I will determine, declare that the public hearing portion is over, and now we have a resolution in the book, Short-Term Work Program Capital Improvement Elements, Annual Update Transmittal.
So moved.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. So moved. Thank you so much. Next, resolution requesting approval of a streetlight district for the village of Rochea Division, subdivision. Don't take. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. The item you have before you is a resolution to approve the, a request for the addition of a streetlight in an existing streetlight district for the villages of Rowanshire, Rowanshire subdivision. We received a request from the Homeowners Association from the villages of Rowanshire, requesting the addition of one new streetlight to be added at the intersection of Mill Road and Sheffield Chase, and also added to their existing streetlight district. The ULDC allows up to three lights to be added to the streetlight district without new petitions being required, and Henry County currently pays $419.75 monthly for the existing 41 lights, and will now pay monthly lighting charges of $432.75 for 42 lights, and in return assess the property owners $30.73 annually on their property tax bills. The planning and zoning staff recommends approval of the request.
Anybody have any questions or comments? We have a resolution approving a request for the addition of a streetlight to an existing streetlight district for the village of Rochea subdivision located on Mill Road.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two.
Say.
Second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand, please. All opposed, same sign. So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Finance Resolution, question approval to refinance the 208 Nash Farms installment sale agreement with ACCG. Mr. Fred Alata, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Come tonight before you to propose, have a proposal to refinance the May 29, 2008 Nash Farms installment loan sales agreement. In May of 2008, the county sold the Nash Farms property, it's approximately 192 acres, to AC, to Association County Commissioners of Georgia, I'll be using ACCG for short, for $8,208,200, who then, then they in turn sold it to the county, back to the county pursuant to an installment sales agreement. ACCG then assigned the installment sales agreement to Lodge, Delage London Public Finance LLC, who then became the lender. The agreement calls at that time for an interest rate of 4.42% and monthly payments of $73,577.84 starting July 1, 2008, and going through maturity of June 1, 2020. Quest was made to the existing lender to refinance the loan to save the county on the interest rate, but continue to make the payments through the same maturity date of June 1, 2020. This will allow monthly cash flow savings for the county from the reduction of any monthly interest. The lender did propose to reduce the interest rate from 4.42% to 2.75, with the county making the October 1 payment this year, and a loan, new loan to refinancing to close on that date, and the first payment then would be due at the new interest rate on November 1, 2014. This results in interest expense for the remaining 68 months, five years, eight months, of $363,685 from the present loan of 584,542. And that is again where the results in the savings of $226,258. Their proposal has no fees or expenses that they would be charging the county to do this refinancing, but the county will have to pick up its legal or advisory fees. And speaking with Jim Monticello, our county bond counsel, he estimates this should be no more than $15,000 to do this. In an effort to provide the opportunity for local banks and others to compete for the county's business, two local banks were selected, Heritage Bank and United Community Bank, and a regional bank, SunTrust, which is our existing bank. Both Heritage and United Community could not get competitive on the rate, as they did not have an appetite for tax-exempt lending, which this is. Heritage rates was 4.35, which is only .07 less than our present rate, and United Community was 3.42 or 1% less, and again, not as low as the 2.75 that Delage London is proposing. SunTrust, our existing bank, came in at 1.79, but they could not complete the financing under the same arrangement that's presently in place. Instead, they were proposing that the borrower would be Henry County Development Authority, supported by an intergovernmental contract. The major difference between the two, the installment sales agreement and the intergovernmental contract, is the only collateral, the installment sales is only collateralized by the land, and the intergovernmental agreement is the full faith and credit of the pledge of the county. And this is how they were able to provide a more competitive rate of 1.79 versus 2.75 or, or the others from the other banks. Problem is, in speaking with bond counsel, the financing could not be, would not be appropriate for Henry County Development Authority to do this loan because of the unique constitutional and statutory provision that limits projects and prior, and parties that it may provide financing for. And therefore, we couldn't recognize the additional savings that would come about from the 1.79 SunTrust was looking at this to see if they could do something different, and over the last two weeks since this, since this was written up, they've not been able to come up with another means to do it. It's not within their wheelhouse to be able to do it other than this method they proposed. As a result, staff recommends the acceptance of the Delage London proposal, with all agreements ready to close by October 1, and a formal acceptance by September 21 to meet the 60-day condition of acceptance before their letter of July 24 is deemed null and void, and all the proposals are attached in your book.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The only question I have, Fred, is I just want to clarify for the public. It didn't look like the amortization term extended, it was just the payment went down approximately $3,000 a month, is that...
Correct. I had it extend, keep it at the same maturity date.
Sure.
So all the savings, as I said, would end up transferring back to the county, which is about almost $40,000 a year.
Because I think, you know, a lot of people can equate when you refinance your house, you know, that's something we, a lot of us do in our own household finances, but sometimes people don't notice when you refinance your house, if you've been paying for 20 years and you go and refinance again, you extend your amortization back to a full 30 years again, or whatever you choose. We're not doing that. We're actually keeping the amortization schedule, same payoff date, it's just a savings, a true net-net savings.
Yes. The other, the other option would have been to keep the payment the same and bring the maturity to a lesser time, but this way, as I said, for the county, it is a, still it's a $226,000 savings over the 68 months, but it does generate, if you would, for the county's budget each year approximately $40,000 savings.
Okay.
Any further discussion or comment? If not, we have a resolution in the book, resolution approving a refinancing agreement with Delage Aladdin Public Finance LLC as it pertains to Nash Farms and for related purposes.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two.
Second.
Second District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Public Works have a resolution request approval to provide electricity and lighting for a traffic signal and all maintenance costs for landscaping of the intersection of SR42 and Locust Grove Road, Slant Jackson Street. Terry McMichels, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. Henry County Department of Transportation approached Georgia Department of Transportation for helping signalize in the intersection at State Route 42 at Locust, Jackson Street. Georgia DOT informed that they would proceed with assisting us in putting up a temporary signal at that location until a roundabout could be programmed. Georgia Department of Transportation furnished the poles and the equipment for the signal. Henry County and the City of Locust Grove covered the remainder of the cost. Georgia Department, and now that signal is in operation today. Georgia Department of Transportation has now requested this county to sign a letter stating our agreement to, one, fund the full and entire cost of the electric energy used for any lighting installed as needed or required, and, two, any maintenance costs associated with the landscaping of the intersection after construction is complete. They did this for us to show support for consideration of the roundabout as a feasible, feasible alternative at the location of State Route 42, Locust and Jackson Street. So this resolution would authorize the chairman to sign a letter where the county agrees to those two stipulations.
Any questions or comment? No, we have a resolution authorizing the chairman to sign a letter stating our agreement to provide electricity and lighting as needed or required and all maintenance costs for landscaping of the intersection at SR42, Locust Grove, Jackson Street after construction is completed. Somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion District One.
Say.
Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you so much. Resolution request approval to rescind Resolution 14-84 and 14-131 and commence SPLUS IV Project One, Project for calendar year 2014. Presenter Rocky and also Ron Burkhalter will be here as well, this SPLUS project. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. SPLUS IV was approved by the Boarders in November of 2013. There's a need to rescind Resolution Number 14-84 and Resolution Number 14-131 in order to, in order to move baseball fields, which is in District One, and Mount Olive Road, which is in District Two, from Priority One projects for calendar year 2015 to Priority projects to calendar year 2014. For District One, there's no need to reduce the budgets of any projects for the calendar year 2014. District Two budgets for Jodico at Black Hall and Industrial Parkory at Stereot 20 were reduced in order to add Mount Olive Road. SPLUS staff recommends approval to commence the following projects for SPLUS IV Priority One for calendar year 2014.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I want to give a point of clarification, because I know we're going to have a number of these adjustments, and Rocky, you and I talked about it before the meeting previously. I know I have citizens that are looking at their projects and they see that we're moving some, some pots around. It's not always, I want everybody to know, all of our projects are super important to us, but we have other state organizations, the Georgia Department of Transportation, others that's dragged their feet, and we're just trying to make sure that if they're slow on the response and we have money starting to build up in the account, we're going to find some way to utilize it and still come back and make that a priority to finish those projects. But I just didn't want citizens thinking, oh, my project's getting pushed down, because you hear that discussion out there, that's not our case, it's just we're going to maximize our resources as much as possible.
That's correct.
Any more comments or questions? Has a resolution in the book, Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to rescind Resolution Number 14-84 and Resolution Number 14-131 and approval to commence SPLUS IV Priority One projects for calendar year 2014. If somebody would move.
So moved.
Have a motion District Four. Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Resolution request approval to amend Resolution 14-44 prioritizing the SPLUS IV projects for 2014 to 2019. Rocky, good evening.
Good evening again. Resolution Number 14-44 was approved on February 11 of 2014. There's a need to amend Resolution Number 14-44 to reflect the changes of SPLUS IV Priority One projects for calendar year 2014. Baseball fields, District One, Mount Olive Road, and Thorbred Drive for District Two, and Eastlake Road at Stereot 20 for District Three and Four were moved from year 2014 as per attached Exhibit A. SPLUS staff recommends approval to amend Resolution Number 14-44 prioritization of SPLUS IV projects. This is again just a cleanup of, kind of going back to the same previous resolution. Take any questions?
Anybody got any questions or comment? Have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend Resolution Number 14-44 prioritizing the SPLUS IV projects.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two. Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution request approval to use annual contracts for the SPLUS IV Mount Olive Road paving project. Rocky, good evening, again.
Again, good evening. Again, it's the SPLUS IV project, Mount Olive. The county has a... The county has an annual contract for the following services: liquid asphalt emulsion per Resolution Number 14-76, for stone per Resolution 12-247, for dump trucks rental per Resolution Number 10-87, and for plant-mixed asphalt per Resolution 14-115. Henry County Department of Transportation will be performing this work for the SPLUS department and has provided an estimated cost, as shown on the attached Exhibit A. Labor and equipment to perform the work is included in the Henry County DOT budget. Funding for paving of Mount Olive is available in the project budget. SPLUS staff recommends approval using existing annual contracts to perform the work needed to complete the paving of Mount Olive as listed on attached Exhibit A.
Anybody have any questions to comment?
Move to approve.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve. Nobody has any comments?
We have a motion to approve Resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the use of annual contracts for paving the SPLUS IV Mount Olive Road. They have a second?
Second.
Second, District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution requesting approval to use annual contracts for SPLUS IV resurfacing widening and/or surface treatment projects. Rocky, good evening again.
Good evening, sir. As part of this SPLUS IV project prioritization commencement list, resurfacing widening or surface treatment for District One, District Two, District Three, and District Four were approved. The county has annual contracts for the following services: the liquid asphalt, stone per Resolution 12-247, for dump trucks Resolution 1087, and also for plant-mixed asphalt per Resolution 14-115. Again, Henry County DOT will be performing this work for the SPLUS department and has provided an estimated cost, as shown on Exhibit A. Labor and equipment to perform the resurfacing, widening, and surface treatment work is included in the Henry County DOT budget. Funding for resurfacing, widening, and/or surface treatment is budgeted in the respective District One, District Two, District Three, and District Four project accounts. SPLUS staff recommends approval of using existing annual contracts to perform the work needed to complete the resurfacing projects as listed on the attached Exhibit A. Take any questions?
Any questions to comment? Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve the use of annual contracts for SPLUS IV resurfacing, widening, or surface treatment projects.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two.
Second.
Second, District One, Three, and Four. So I'm going to say four, second that. They come in simultaneous. So any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Resolution requesting approval of the signed replacement landscaping agreement with Eagles Landing Community Association Wind Song Plantation. Rocky?
Yes, sir. Construction for the widening of Eagles Landing Parkway during SPLUS III caused the removal of signage and landscaping within the Eagles Landing Parkway roadway at the entrance of the Wind Song Plantation subdivision. Eagles Landing Community Association manages and oversees the Eagles Landing subdivision and desires to replace the landscaping and hardscape features that were negatively impacted by the Eagles Landing Parkway road improvement project. This agreement sets forth the parameters of sign and/or landscaping replacements and authorized cost reimbursement to the association in the amount of $27,090.63, and the money is available in the budget for Eagles Landing SPLUS III.
Have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing approval of the signed replacement landscaping agreement with the Eagles Landing Community Association Incorporated for the Wind Song. If somebody would move in that direction. Somebody have a motion, District Four?
Second.
Second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution requesting approval of a signed replacement landscaping agreement with the Eagles Landing Community Association for the Eagles Landing subdivision. Rocky?
Yes, Chairman. Basically, it's the same agreement. In this case, this will be on the Eagles Landing subdivision. Again, during the Eagles Landing Parkway widening, signage and landscaping were removed, negatively removed due to the, impacted due to the project. And this agreement sets forth parameters for sign and landscaping replacement and authorized cost reimbursement to the association in the amount of $14,522.81, and funds are available in the SPLUS III Eagles Landing project.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing approval of the signed replacement landscaping agreement with the Eagles Landing Community Association Incorporated for the Eagles Landing subdivision.
So move.
Have a motion from District Four.
Second.
Second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, said motion, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution requesting approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Locust Grove for the construction of a baseball field at Tanger Park. Ron Burkhalter, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. In November 2013, the voters of Henry County approved the SPLUS IV referendum, which included funds for ball fields located in District One. The SPLUS IV referendum stipulated a 70% county, 30% city share cost for the park construction. Tanger Park is located within the city limits of the city of Locust Grove and is dedicated for use as a public park to serve the residents of the county and the city. The county and city have a joint desire to enter an intergovernmental agreement for the construction of baseball softball fields at Tanger Park located in Locust Grove. The SPLUS department has estimated that the total project cost will be $785,715, with the county's 70% portion being $550,000 and the city of Locust Grove's 30% portion being
Anybody have any questions to comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the intergovernmental agreement needs to be amended. If you go to Page Two, under Section One, Paragraph B, it currently reads, "The city has conducted the necessary Phase One environmental study." That needs to be amended to read, "The city has conducted or will conduct the necessary Phase One environmental."
Has or will? I mean, the city will? Okay.
Yes.
Just put, if it'd be appropriate, it's the city will conduct the necessary Phase One and make this contract, this agreement valid, continued upon that document. Would that be acceptable?
Yes, I think the language that Ron proposed was my language, Mr. Chairman, before the meeting. So I think his language will suffice. It's my understanding that the city is currently looking to see if the Phase One has been done. It may have been done, they just haven't located it just yet. And so, I'm satisfied with the language that he proposed, that's my language.
Okay. Any other questions or comment?
Hey, Ron, didn't they do a study on that? It was approved? Didn't they have approval on the study on that? From the city?
The environmental Phase One? They're looking for Commissioner right now to see if it was done. Again, the way the language is right now, if they haven't conducted one, one will be conducted.
Well, what am I supposed to, we need to put it here to where, if and when it ever happens, we don't have to come back and amend anything. That gives the chairman the authority to execute the agreement. Would that be, that's what we're trying to do, is we don't have to come back. Okay? We have an amendment to B. If somebody would have a resolution. Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the intergovernmental agreement between the Henry County, Georgia, and the city of Locust Grove for the construction of a baseball softball field at Tanger in Locust Grove with the amended agreement that is attached. Have a motion, District One.
Second.
Second, District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution requesting lease purchase for field sports lighting for fields at Tanger Station Park. Ron Burkhalter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In November 2013, the voters of Henry County approved the SPLUS IV referendum, which included funds for the Tanger Station ball fields in Locust Grove. The Henry County SPLUS department is requesting authorization to use SPLUS IV funds to lease purchase field sports lighting for the Tanger Station ball fields in Locust Grove. Musco Lighting provided a quote of $250,693.75 to lease purchase field sports lighting for the three softball fields at the ball fields in Locust Grove. This proposal states that the first payment is due one year from the contract date. Musco Lighting is the sole source vendor for Henry County Parks and Rec for field sports lighting. Attached is a sole source letter from Musco Lighting, and is utilized in numerous Henry County parks. The SPLUS department has budgeted funds for improvements to the Tanger Station ball fields in Locust Grove in the SPLUS IV calendar year 2015 budget, and payment is due one year from the execution of the contract.
Anybody got any questions or comment? Has a resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving the lease purchase of a field sports lighting for Tanger Station ball fields in Locust Grove, Georgia, using budgeted SPLUS IV funds? We have a motion, District One. Second, District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution requesting approval of a budget amendment and to bid a remount for a purchase of an emergency medical vehicle. Yes, sir.
Again, in November 2013, the voters of Henry County approved the SPLUS IV referendum, which included funds for ambulances for the Henry County Fire Department. The SPLUS department is requesting authorization to use SPLUS IV funds to remount and purchase one emergency medical vehicle. The old is a 2003 Ford F-450, asset number 6984, on a new chassis on behalf of the Henry County Fire Department. The purchasing department solicited bids to remount and purchase an emergency medical vehicle and posted the bid on the websites for the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and the ACCG GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. One vendor responded. Attached is the bid tabulation of the one vendor. The one responsive bid came from Custom Truck and Bodyworks of Woodbury, Georgia, in the amount of $100,214. County asset number 6984, the 2003 F-450, shall be declared to be of no further use to the county and may be used as a trade-in for the purchase of the new equipment. There is a $100,000 budget in the SPLUS IV 2014 calendar year ambulance account. A budget amendment is necessary transferring $214 from SPLUS IV 2015 calendar year ambulance Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where we don't get cross-step here. It says there is a $100,000 budget in the SPLUS IV 2014 calendar year ambulance budget, and that's SPLUS IV.
Yes.
SPLUS III. Is that what that means? That SP 4003, what does that mean?
That's the SPLUS account number.
So that's not SPLUS III money? That's, all this is SPLUS IV money, right?
All this is SPLUS IV money, yes, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because, you know, we got tied up in this with that, putting them O3s after something and O2s. Okay. Having said that, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners amending the SPLUS IV 2014, 2015 calendar year budget and awarding a bid to remount and purchase of emergency medical vehicles using SPLUS IV funds.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Two.
Second.
Second, District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution requesting award of a bid for design and bill for the Bellamy Memorial Park.
The voters of Henry County approved the SPLUS IV referendum, which included funds for a new park in District Five. Purchasing department solicited proposals to design and build the Bellamy Memorial Park. Purchasing department solicited proposals to design and build, design-build the Bellamy Memorial Park and posted on the website of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, ACCG GLGA, and prospective vendors were notified about the postings via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. One responsive and responsible proposal was received from Sports Turf of Whitesburg, Georgia, and was reviewed and scored by an evaluation committee. The evaluation committee recommends an award to Sports Turf for this project. The SPLUS department is requesting authorization to use SPLUS IV funds to design and build the Bellamy Memorial Park located in District Five at 16 Fairview Road and also the address of 1935 Pinola Road in Ellenwood, Georgia. Staff recommends the award of the RFP to Sports Turf for the design-build of Bellamy Memorial Park in the amount of $2,200,000 that is contingent upon the purchase of the relevant tracts of land and the date not to surpass December 31st, 2014.
Anybody got any questions or comment? Have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve an award of contract to design and build.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, there's, there's some language that needs to be added to the resolution, the resolution itself, in the very last, in the amount of $2,200,000, again, is contingent upon the county's acquisition of the relevant tracts of land owned before December 31st, 2014. What I had read in the executive summary added to the resolution.
So we, you got me confused. We take that out or leave that in?
Which, and to the resolution, the resolve clause. That language needs to be inside the resolve clause of the resolution. So he's adding that.
So we're going to make sure that's in the resolution, even though it's not in a printed manner? Okay. Everybody knows that. So if somebody, if somebody approves this resolution, this resolution is approved as amended.
Yes.
As to what's published, so.
Yes, sir.
If somebody would move in that direction. Have a motion, District Five. Second, District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you. Resolution requesting approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the city of Hampton Senior Rec Center. Ron, again.
Yes, sir. The construction and development of a senior center rec center in the city of Hampton is an approved District Two SPLUS IV project. The city of Hampton has, will acquire property located at 56 McDonough Street, consisting of approximately 10 acres. This property is located across the street from the existing Fortson Library. This property is in developable condition, as it has been mass graded, has all utilities in place, examples of water and sewer, and the first one and a half acres has curb and gutter and already installed. These site improvements cost approximately $350,000 to install. The city has offered to provide the county five acres of the McDonough Street property after they have acquired the property for the purpose of constructing the Henry, excuse me, the Hampton Senior Center and Rec Center thereon, provided that the county contributes toward the site improvement costs in the amount of $250,000. County staff has advised that the cost of bringing the West Main Street property into a developable condition, which is the original proposed site of the facility, would be in excess of $600,000, approximately $275,000 in site improvements, and approximately $335,000 in road improvements. Thus, it'd be far more beneficial to the citizens to locate the facility on the McDonough Street property, and an intergovernmental agreement is needed to accomplish this transaction.
Anybody have any questions? We have a resolution to book Henry County Board of Commissioners to establish an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Hampton and Henry County for the donation of approximately five acres of property located at 56 McDonough Street for the construction and development of a senior center rec center in the city of Hampton. If District Two would consider making this motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Two.
Second.
Second, District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All opposed, same sign. So move. All opposed, same sign, so move. Chairman has no comments at this time? Does any Commissioners like to make a comment at this time? County man, would you like to make a comment at this time?
No, sir, I have nothing.
Chairman, you have one.
You have one?
I want to remind people that this weekend is the hundred and fifty, fiftieth anniversary of Kilpatrick's Raid, that they're going to be doing a celebration out at Nash Farms. If you want to go out to Friends of Nash Farms, you can see the schedule of what the activities are.
County attorney, you have any comments?
No.
Upcoming meetings, Monday, September the first, all county offices will be closing in service of Labor Day, Tuesday, September the second at nine AM. We'll have a meeting on Tuesday, September the sixteenth at six-thirty PM. Both of these are regular meetings. Tuesday, October the seventh at nine AM, meeting has been canceled. As I understand, we cancel this at the last meeting and the meeting before that is the fall break for the Henry County School System. So we cancel that meeting. Now, if somebody would move that we adjourn into executive session in accordance with a provision of OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash three and other applicable laws and pertinence to the advice of County Attorney for the purposes of personnel issues.
So moved.
Have a motion District Two, Second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Same sign if you oppose it, so move. Does somebody move, we move back into public session?
So moved.
Have a motion District Four, Second District Three. Does somebody move that we approve the affidavit of executive session? Is that what's next?
Yes.
Okay, does somebody move we approve the affidavit?
Move to approve.
They're moving District Two, second?
Second.
Second District Three, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, somebody move, we adjourn.
Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda. Make a motion to amend the agenda to add an item for adjusting the legal services for Henry County, making a change to the legal services for Henry County.
Okay, we, we have a motion to amend the agenda to add, how do you put that? To outsource legal counsel.
Outsourcing legal services.
Okay, we're going, we're going to abolish our law department, and we're going to outsource all of our law needs. Okay. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Second, who's second? Second, District One, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your-
This is amending the agenda.
Amending the agenda, that's what the motion was, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, okay.
Chairman, just to give a little background, Henry County continues to be a growing community. As a result, our needs change. In a community with over two hundred thousand residents, our in-house legal department of a single attorney has reached its limits. The Board of Commissioners recognize that we need additional resources, but in tight economic times, we need to find these resources as cost effectively as possible. The solution is to outsource the entire legal department to law firms that have experience in local government and attorneys with specialized knowledge to address our growing needs and unique legal challenges. I'd like to make a motion that we make to abolish the in-house legal department of Henry County Board of Commissioners as of September second, twenty fourteen, at eight fifty-nine AM, and then on September second, at nine AM, professional legal services will transfer to Power &amp; Jog Center, Attorneys at Law, and Fincher Denmark Williams and Mini Field LLC. The budget should be amended accordingly.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion? Without going into details, the Chair thinks this is probably one of the worst mistakes Henry County could, could ever make. Most counties that get bigger, they get their own legal staff. Now, the bigger we get, we're now outsourcing, and I think it's for personal reasons that we're doing this without going into detail. So having said that, it is my intent, obviously, that I'm just one, but I'm going to vote no. So anybody else have any comments? If no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Now, will somebody move, we adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, have a motion from District One, second from District Three, all in favor? Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting adjourned.